Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner. Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silence for, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go to the Consent Agenda, Items 2 through 13D, considering to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on the item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Before we get started, I understand we have a girl that's in the Boy Scouts, working on a merit badge. What troop are you with?
Sixty-six.
Where's that at?
In the Millian.
Oh, wow. Well, thanks for coming today. We knew you'd be excited to have us introduce you, so we won't make you stand up and give your name and address, okay? Have a good day here. I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second, two is a reading of the May 24 City Council Minutes. Three is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Tobacco Hut, 4523 Morningside Avenue, for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. Four are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing the Police Department to accept a JAG program grant for the Tri-State Drug Task Force.
I have a question for Captain Riley. There you are. Thanks for making an application for this grant. Appreciate it. That's a shared grant, correct?
Yes, it is.
Did I read the homework correctly?
Yes.
Fifty-fifty, is that?
It's shared. Actually, there's an Assistant Woodbury County Attorney that gets a portion of that, a deputy, and a police officer. So, it is split fifty-fifty, but they have two employees that will share their 50%, and we'll have the other 50% for our one officer.
Okay, I thought it said here it was going to be utilized for two police officers' salaries.
One is a deputy, one's a police officer, and one's an assistant.
I see, okay.
How many do we have in the task force now?
Three.
Thank you.
B is a resolution supporting a fund for the Sulan Grant Application on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mayor, I've got some comments on that, maybe questions. This is really a good deal. I really appreciate your submitting the Sulan Grant Application. And things that jumped out of the paper in the homework we had for the write-up, hi there, was that the intent was to document the historical significance and structural conditions of each building downtown and to prepare a nomination to list the grouping of buildings and structures to the National Register of Historic Places as federally designated history or historic district. And then you give the parameters of the study, which is good. That's the north, just north of the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino Campus bordered by Fourth Street on the south, Water Street on the west, Seventh Street on the north, and Pearl Street on the east. There is an estimated 70-plus properties to be examined and researched in the 60-acre area. Many of the buildings can trace their construction date back to the turn of the 20th century through the 1920s. If approved by the National Park Service, this area would be the second such designated historic district in downtown Sioux City, joining historic Fourth Street in the National Register. And I think that's terrific. I really do. And I'm glad that you're pursuing this. The other thing, it's a win-win situation. The write-up you have, the project, will also provide an opportunity for undergraduate history majors enrolled in Sioux City colleges and universities to learn about historic preservation practices and heritage conservation stewardship as a possible career field. So, it's a real win-win proposition that you have before the council and the mayor. And I really appreciate that they're going to, that the students will get experience in the real world, as you call it, in the historic preservation, which is a very important component to the success of Sioux City and downtown.
I agree. We had two interns start today, too, with the grant that you guys had already accepted from Campus Compact, also history majors. So, we would have a total of three if this grant gets accepted.
Perfect. Thank you for the conversation.
When you're done with this study, will that make it easier to get state historical credits?
Yes.
So, we're only about nine years behind where we should have been, but what the heck? Not your fault, because the council has never had it as a priority.
Yeah. And we really did try with the CLG grant that we were awarded to do a whole downtown district, but the state's really pushing for us to piece it into sections. So, we decided since we already had a local designation with historic Pearl Street, we would make it a state, right?
Good luck. I recall that you asked for that about...
Nine years ago.
Nine years.
You weren't around, but...
I wasn't around. No, but thanks for the follow-up and wish you success in this project.
Thanks.
It will be a win situation.
Before you go, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Larissa Carroll and...
Position.
Okay. Community Development Secretary.
Sorry, thank you.
You're fine.
Thanks.
Thank you. C is a resolution accepting an emergency voucher award agreement for 39 emergency housing vouchers authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act. D is IEDA, whatever that means. Items 4D1 and 2 are resolutions supporting IEDA applications to the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program for the 2201 Florence Avenue and 1005 Fourth.
I was just going to make a comment about that. Renee, no need to come up. I was just going to say I'm excited about the program and the opportunity to do this. I have never seen a lot of action in the Alfs Building. I know there has been in the past. So, to get an investment and hopefully see some commercial property there and residential up above, I think it's just continued investment in our downtown district. And so, I'm happy that Ochunk is willing to do that and looking forward to seeing the results.
There was some action there at that building last night, because I drove by about nine o'clock and the fire alarm went off. And the fire department was out there and people trying to get in the building. Nobody could get in.
I agree with what Councilmember Waters was saying for the redevelopment of the former Alfs Building as well. It's really a terrific project. The other thing that's really good is on the 2201 Florence Avenue, construction of five single-family homes, which we need so much in this community. So, it's just really a good project. The estimated assessments are going to be very healthy ones. So, it's just, yeah, it's a good program. I agree with you, Alex, on that.
Happy they're willing to make that investment in our community.
Thanks, Renee.
Five are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing the alley near Fifth and Iowa Streets, June 18th to 20th, for the Firehouse Bars. Biker Weekend B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets near Grandview Park, July 1st to 5th, for the Saturday in the Park Festival.
Hey, I wanted to mention something about that closure. Dave, seeing in the audience, reminds me about, with these closures for Saturday in the Park, I was going to mention it during Council Concerns, but do you, not to put you on the spot, do you want to talk a little bit about the volunteer opportunities? I was just going to make a pitch, if anyone's interested in volunteering, what they could be doing and how they would maybe reach out if interested?
Yeah, we need a lot of volunteers. Dave Bernstein with State Steel, Saturday in the Park Festival, 208 Court Street. We need a lot of volunteers. It's very difficult this year to get volunteers. It's also very difficult to get anyone to work in general. In particular, we'll be coming back to you guys. We're also having an issue with off-duty police officers and proper coverage there, too. So, there's just a lot of difficulties. This will be probably the hardest year we've ever had to put on the festival. So, any help from the city on any front would be awesome and greatly appreciated. And we thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
They go to the website to sign up, or who do they contact?
Yeah, SaturdayinthePark.com is the best spot to sign up, for sure. Thanks.
Yeah, I was going to bring it up during Council Concerns, and I saw you, so I appreciate you being here. But yeah, please make sure to go on the website, sign up. If you're interested in volunteering, it's a two-day festival this year. So, there's a lot of need, but it brings an incredible opportunity. I mean, just a lot of people and a lot of fun to our community. And we want to make sure to show Dave and the organizers the support that they've continued to show this community. So, thank you, Dave.
Okay. Six are actions adopting construction documents. A is a motion approving plans and specs for the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Offsite Improvement Project. Are we running a conduit for fiber up this road? Or can we?
Gordon Fair, City Engineer. The Law Enforcement Center is running one from Lewis to the Law Enforcement Center, but not from the Law Enforcement Center to Outer Drive. I had requested it, but the county had said no to that.
Just a minute. Let's go slow. The water line's going up the backside, right where FiberCom has a big termination for that school, I'm sure. Are we running, are we running a fiber conduit up anywhere? I don't want to come back here and you start tearing streets up that we just put in. Are we...
From...
And I don't care what the county wants. If we have to pay extra to extend it past that, why are we not doing that?
Or if we can, yeah.
When will we ever figure it out?
Or could we do that now, I guess is the question.
Where's the fiber going to run? Where's it running?
From Lewis to the entrance, east to the entrance of the Law Enforcement Center.
But we're not tearing that whole street up on 28th Street. We're only, right?
Right. No, they're putting it in the parking on the north side.
They're putting it where?
In the parking.
Why wouldn't we just put it in this ditch that we got going up there already? You're running water and sewer up here, right?
No, we're running water. We're running new water up to the Mobile Home Park as part of a city project. And then the...
I thought we're running the water across the school district property.
No, that's the sanitary.
Okay, so why don't we put it there? Why, so we don't have to dig anything up? We don't have to dig down, down below... How, are you going to run it? I mean, I don't understand why you just wouldn't run it up there and then bring it back out in the street. I don't...
It is running from Lewis to the Law Enforcement Center.
I understand that, but there's a lot, there's a lot of street there and driveways that are going to be disrupted.
So, it's going to be running from Lewis to law enforcement? Are you saying you want it from law enforcement to Outer?
Well, yeah, if they're going to pave, absolutely. But why are we, why don't we just put it in this same ditch? Why would you go all the way back to Lewis and start tearing streets up? Doesn't make sense to me.
So, you're asking, can we add that to the project now? Or can we have that be a part of it? Is that possible, Gordon, or what would need to be done in order?
We've already bid out the water line project. That one's already bid out and has been awarded.
Yeah.
This one is currently, these documents here will have fiber in it to go in right next to that new water line. And they'll be boring, I'm sorry.
But not to Outer Drive?
But not to Outer Drive, no.
Well, why didn't you tell them we'll pave, why... I thought we said we weren't going to pave anymore if we didn't run conduit. I thought we said that. Did we not?
I had requested it.
We're, aren't we doing the project? It's our project. We're the ones spending the 2.8 million. So, you requested it to who?
To the engineer. And the engineer brought it to the county, and the county said no.
I don't care what the county wants. We're paying for it.
Was this discussed in your meeting, Dan, or no?
Shane, do you recall any discussion about that?
What do they care? They don't care if we're, I mean, I don't blame them. It's not their project. It's our project.
It was discussed, and because the fiber was excluded from what the city, they put it on top of the county. So, the county said because it was for their project and they were the ones that had to bear the sole cost, they were just taking it to their property was what was said. My question, my question is, I just want to make sure I understand what the mayor said here.
The mayor said, as we weren't putting any more streets in this town, that we didn't put fiber under it. That's what, that's not what, just the mayor. That's what everybody here has said.
Shane, will you give us your name and address, too, for the record?
Oh, sorry.
Why this is even a discussion?
Shane Olbruck, 600 Maverick Lane, Madrid, Iowa.
And so, it was brought up on the committee? I missed that one.
It was, it was brought up because of how the contract for the 28E was written, that fiber was solely the responsibility of the county. So, they ran the fiber from, following the sewer line, because if you would follow the water line, you would have to bore underneath Lewis Boulevard or Business 75, because the handhold for fiber's on, I'm directionally challenged, I think it's the west side of the road, but it's on the wrong side of the road, so you'd have to bore across. Or if you come back, aim over by where the school is, the handhold is on what would be the east side of Lewis Boulevard. So, we looked at both options, and it was less expensive to come up through the schools and follow the sanitary sewer rather than follow the water line.
Gordon, you just said the opposite of that.
Yeah. It's not, not going through the sanitary.
I thought it was following the sanitary.
No. No, it's going along the north side of 28th.
Oh, he is, okay. I thought it was following, I'm sorry. I thought we originally talked both directions. We originally talked both directions.
So, all of us that have property along there can expect a lot of disruptions where we could just go up the backside here.
Hi, my name's Matt Miller. I'm with Touth and Associates. We're the engineer on the project. What Gordon's stating is correct. The fiber optic is being installed in the right-of-way, not underneath the pavement. So, if you were to come back later and extend it from our point of termination to Outer Drive, there'd be no disturbance to pavement.
There's a disturbance if I own a building there, my friend, where I don't...
If you have a driveway, is what he's saying?
I understand. There are no driveways between, on the side of the road where the fiber is on the north side, there are no driveways between our termination point and Outer Drive.
I'm talking, I got a building on 28th Street with a long driveway. You definitely are going to disrupt that. Where if you just went up school property, you wouldn't be. And I'm not the only one with a driveway. You got Winkler Roofing, you got Sioux City Trailer Sales. You've got four...
That fiber is going past all of those driveways right now. It will be going past that.
It will be, but it doesn't now. It's going all the way to Lewis, you just said, across the street. So, you're coming by all those businesses, and that, I'm... I don't know. I don't understand, Bob, why we don't find the extra money for the little bit you're talking to put fiber. Forget which way you go, I don't care. But I do care, because we're going to be tearing that up. Soon as Ben America goes there, guys, guess what they're going to want? They're going to want fiber. I'm voting no.
Is there a way to make an adjustment or do anything now, or add to that, or...
Yes.
What can we do, Gordon?
It can be done as an addendum, a change order, after it's awarded.
Sounds like an opportunity to do some problem solving. Then I think then, yeah, it sounds like we would want to do that, if you could make sure that we do that part of it. I think that...
I'll work with Matt on that. We'll take care of that.
Sounds great.
That's what council directs.
Do we need to vote on that right now? Nope. Oh, wait till it's awarded, you said?
For clarification, Nicole DuBois, City Attorney. The council is approving the plans and specs. The county is doing all of the bidding process related to this. So, pursuant to the 20E, the council has to sign off on the plans and specifications. That's all that the vote is for today. But the award and the approval is through the County Board of Supervisors, I believe.
So, they would need to do the addendum?
Correct.
Okay. So, we would just need to continue to have that conversation? Would that go before the committee, that Dan is our representative on?
Shane Olbruck again. Dan's the authority representative on. This is actually an agreement between the city and the Board of Supervisors. So, Dan's not the representative on that. But we, Matt and I can bring that to the Board of Supervisors with council's opinion. Dan's just not on that.
Got it.
2080, city and the county.
But should we ask for the change before we vote?
No.
Have it in writing? Or do we vote and then hope that they change it?
I think she's just saying...
You guys say it's not going to be a problem, but, I mean, you start boring Highway 75, you're going to have all kinds of disruptions. You can tell me you can bore it. I get that. But you still got to dig ditches. You're going to dig it close enough. You're going to close a lane for a while. It doesn't make any sense what we're doing here. None. When you're got to ditch it, you're opening the other way. It makes no difference, but...
I trust that you'll work with them to just see what we can do for a solution. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
No.
Do you want to pull it for a separate vote?
Sure, I do.
Moore?
I'm going to abstain, since I sit on the authority and to be consistent with passengers.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Hardly wait to see how we're not disrupted up there. B is a resolution adopting of plans and specifications for Andrew Avenue Paving Utilities Improvement Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for Rivers Landing Parking Facility Elevator Upgrade Project. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Midwest Alarm Company to provide install and modify fire alarms in Stations 7, 8, 1, and 6. I'm sorry, I didn't send an email out. Why do we have to even do this? What's the problem? We don't have the latest, newest, most fashionable fire alarm system in a firehouse, or what?
Mark is a fire marshal.
You finally didn't pass one of your own stations?
No, we have four existing fire stations that were built prior to the codes requiring sprinkler and fire alarms. Two of these stations do have an existing fire alarm that was required at the time they were built. The other two don't have either sprinkler.
But they're grandfathered in, too.
Yes, they were. But under a risk assessment that we do every year, actually, this has been one of our number-one risks to our facilities, such as Station 1, which houses probably, well, you'll see how much the fire trucks cost next week. And so, this is a small bit of insurance. It is all funded through, other than 10%, funded through a federal grant that we received last year. So, we're paying 10% of the cost on this for all four buildings.
B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Continental Fire Sprinkler to provide stall fire sprinklers in Station 1, 6, 7, and 8. C is a resolution approving a renewal option, number one, with IAAC for the Airport Management Services. D is a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Leach Avenue and Ingleside Avenue Reconstruction Projects. E is a resolution approving Amendment Number 1 to the Consulting Services Agreement with HGM Associates for the Bridge Redecking Project. F is a resolution granting a grading permit to Brickyard Developers for a new driveway and retention basin at 4600 South Lewis Boulevard. A are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution approving an updated job description for the Housing Service Analyst. B is a resolution approving an updated job description for the facility's attendant.
I just had a quick question. Is Janelle... Oh, no.
Human Resources HR Specialist. I'm here for Janelle today.
Yeah, no problem. I had just had a quick question, and it's probably silly. Maybe I should have just sent an email, so I apologize. I know that this then requires that degree, or a degree. Do we normally ask that? I just didn't want it...
Yeah, previously...
Not allow it. Any high school seniors that were advanced that we thought would be appropriate for the position. I just want to make sure.
Previously, it was, there was no education requirement. It was, high school was allowed. And because it has a, the job itself has a level of independence, they added the GED diploma requirement was provision. So...
Okay. I just know, as Dave was pointing out, there are a lot of workforce shortages. And so, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to take a large pool away from us, or something that we might need, or a large population.
I think the concern is just the autonomy and kind of independent work and responsibility and, you know, getting those...
I understand. I just wanted to at least ask the question. So, sorry, an email probably could have sufficed. Thank you.
C is a resolution approving an updated job description for laboratory technician. D is a resolution amending the utilities authorized payroll complement by adding a laboratory technician. E is a resolution approving a contract and salary schedule with Ask Me. F is a resolution approving the personnel manual and salary schedules for pass. Nine are actions authorizing payment. A is a resolution authorizing payment to InfraTrak for the Riverside Boulevard Storm Sewer Cleaning Project. B is a resolution approving settlement of a work comp claim and authorizing payment. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving a corrective city deed petitioners, the diocese of Sioux City, and the Bishop Healan Catholic Schools. B is a resolution reaffirming the council's prior approval of the annexation of land near the intersections of Singing Hills Boulevard and Old Lakeport Road and Elk Creek Road and Old Lakeport Road. Eleven are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sarah Stitches to reupholster seats at the IBPI Center. I'd like to abstain on that, please.
Mayor, I have a question for Matt Salvatore, or maybe a comment. Thank you for moving this forward. We're involved with 20 seats that will be reupholstered, and you said it would extend the life for 20 years, which is good, because the seats are how old?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. They're estimated to be 47 years old. So, this is probably overdue, but it's going to be a nice improvement for the I-Center with all the seats being reupholstered, all 550.
Oh, that's the whole?
Yeah, the whole 550.
Oh, I stand corrected on that. All of them will be.
Yes.
And Hazel said she's pretty excited to see the new seats, right? You use the facility down there?
The 20 was a 20-year extension for the life of the seats, so, and you're taking them all out, not all...
They'll be done, they're not going to be done at the same time. We're going to do them in phases, so we have some available seating.
It'll be done at the vendor's site?
Yes.
Great. I'm excited about that, Matt Salvatore. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to CDW Government for Microsoft Windows Service Data Center Licenses. C is a resolution awarding an order to Caltech for Brother Pocket Printers and rescinding Resolution 2021-0377. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to DPC Industries for sodium bisulfite for the wastewater treatment plant. E is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Old World Industries for caustic solution for the wastewater treatment plant. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward. Thirteen are receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. You got me for abstaining on the one, right? Pass is 5-0. Formers, Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Fourteen's a motion. I move appointing Jessica Board to the Library Board of Trustees. Second. Pass is 5-0. Fifteen's a motion to appointing Tim Paul to the Parks, Parking, and Skywarp System Board of Trustees. I'll move it.
Second.
Pass is 5-0. Sixteen's a motion appointing Andrew Belasic to the Yamanashi Sister City Committee. I'll move that.
Second.
I'm sorry. I'm reading your next one, quite not understanding it. We haven't chose?
No.
Okay.
The new way we have to do it.
Pass is 5-0. Well, motion...
Thank you, Andrew.
Pass is 5-0. Seventeen's a motion and a second to appoint Richard Brown Jr. Waiver the policy that members must be resident electors of Sioux City or Tanny Russell to the Art Center Board of Trustees. We've never quite had done it this way, so explain that to me. Enlighten me as to...
Sure. There have been revisions through the Iowa Public Information Board, some concerns regarding how boards and commissions are addressed and how those votes are conducted. We are proposing that the motions be made in open session of the council and voted upon. Unfortunately, that means that you have to move only one of the two candidates tonight.
Going forward, it would be nice to have known that.
I agree.
And I did provide an email related to this, but it's been a while ago.
I missed that memo.
Explain it. And to get them from lawyers, I don't always read them like I... Let me explain it, and get them from lawyers. I don't always read them like I should, I guess.
You're the best paralegal I've ever had. Come on.
Well, I'll leave it to you guys. So who wants to make a motion?
Well, and my question would be, how often do we make that, um, exception for the residency? Do we know how many individuals are currently serving?
Well, there aren't, oh, it's not always a requirement that they have to be a resident. It depends upon the board and the ordinance, as it's written, correct?
Correct.
And we do have members of committees that are, that live outside of the city, so. It's not a new precedent.
Yeah, some of our boards and.
Yeah, where we have waived.
Yeah, which is just, I just wanted clarification, just so we know in the public.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint, uh, Richard Brown Jr. To complete the balance of a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Second.
And, and, and waiving, you have to make a. And, oh, okay.
Policy.
And, uh, noting that the council, uh, did waive the policy that members must be resident, uh, electors of Sioux City.
There, second. A second, but, but on this particular one only, we're voting to waive the policy.
Right.
Yes, correct.
You have to do it individually on those things.
And this just, this appointment just lasts to the end of this current year, and then they'll be doing it over.
Can I just have that clarification?
Oh, 2024, yeah.
Correct. We're, we're so close within that year that we will reappoint so that we don't have.
Oh, okay. Okay. I got it.
So this one will be for how long?
Place Peggy.
This will be good till 2024, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So this term expiration is technically December 31st of this year, so then we push it out again to extend that, because they didn't get that full balance, and we're so close. Um, so it will be through December 31st, 2024.
Thank you.
And did you have an answer as far as the boards that have those requirements for me?
Um, specific number going through the list. I, I don't, but I can get that for you.
It's okay. It's okay. This is the first time I'd, I usually catch the memos, but I missed that one as well, so I apologize.
One waiver for me is enough, Alex. I mean, we waived it once. We'd need to waive it going forward, if it, if it's warranted by the applicant. So whether we have one or 20, for me, anyway, it's.
Yeah, it's tough.
Okay. Mayor probably wants a vote on this.
Passes five zero, recommendations of planning and zoning. Eighteen's a resolution approving the final plat of Sunny Brook Village. The petitioners, AP Sioux City, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Good afternoon. Ryan Ross, Chairman of Planning and Zoning. Uh, this item passed seven zero. There was no public comment. This has to do with the subdivision of plat next to Fleet Farm.
Right. Next, in front of Hobby Lobby and to the south of Lowe's, right? That big pile of dirt's going to finally get moved. It grows.
Not aware of the dirt, but that's the location, yes.
And the location that we had some people volunteering for litter dash, so.
Mr. Ross, as I consistently do, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you wish.
Thank you. I'll consider that.
Thanks, Ryan.
We'll consider you considered it and wish you a happy day.
And have a nice evening, yeah.
Did you put the vote up for that?
I did.
It was five oh.
Four zero one.
Four zero, sorry.
No, you.
Vote's coming. There it is.
Four zero one, Mr. Moore abstains. Hearings. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the Big Sioux Highway 12 Trail. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Don't want, not on this one? Yeah, which one? This one?
What?
On the trail project?
On ninety?
Okay.
Which one are you waiting? Which one?
Are you just waiting for citizen concerns?
Oh.
Okay. It'll be at the end. We'll make sure you get called. You're okay. We ask a lot of time, so it's probably confusing.
The mayor typically flies through these agendas, but not with the interruptions.
Passes five zero. Twenty's a hearing and resolution proving plans and specs for the runway 13-31 rehabilitation and lighting upgrade. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-one's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing for the GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-two's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action on the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-three's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing of the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-four's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action on the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-five's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-six is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-seven's a resolution approving publication of notice of the hearing for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Twenty-eight's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard? Close the hearing, sorry. I'm just thinking we've done this a few times now.
A little monotonous.
But I said I wasn't going to say anything about that today, so I'm going to let it go. Passes, uh, five zero. Twenty-nine's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing of the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move it. Second.
They left. It was just getting exciting.
Passes five zero. Thirty's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I will move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Got a rhythm.
Passes five zero. Thirty-one's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second. I'd like you to ask the Attorney General if there's a faster way to do this, Nicole. I know you're going to tell me there isn't, but. Who we need?
She just finished. Say she, say they.
Yeah, right.
Passes five zero. Thirty-two's a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take actions of the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Thirty-three's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that.
Second.
No.
Vote is five nothing.
Vote is five nothing. There it came.
In favor.
Getting worn out.
Probably.
What was that, thirty-four?
That was thirty-three.
Three. Thirty-three. Thirty-four is a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action for the issuance of GEO capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second. Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Thirty-five's a resolution approving publication of notice of hearing for the issuance of GEO urban renewal capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second. My lord. Passes five zero. Thirty-six, a hearing and resolution instituting proceedings to take action for the issuance of GEO urban renewal capital loan notes. I'll move that. Second. Hearings now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Thirty-seven's a resolution approving 2021A and 2021B official statement. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Thirty-eight is a resolution rescinding the sale of GEO bonds and accepting a proposal to purchase the GEO loan capital loan notes series twenty-one, 2021A. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Thirty-nine's a resolution rescinding the sale of taxable GEO bonds and accepting a proposal to purchase taxable GEO capital loan notes series 2021B. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Forty's a resolution accepting the redemption of outstanding GEO bond series 2016A. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Forty-one's a resolution authorizing redemption of outstanding taxable GEO bond series 2016B. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Forty-two's a resolution amending Resolution 2021-0, 042 by authorizing a 90-day delay in demolition property at 2608 Jennings Street. The property owner's Ralph Pedersen. We also have to move that.
Second. And no, anyone to be heard on that item?
That's what, Darrell, that's what you're recommending. Correct?
We finally made it to you, Darrell.
Yeah, we, the, all the documentation came in with the bond and everything in place, so, uh, we recommend approval of the 90-day stay of demolition.
Did they do much over the last 90 days?
Did they do much to it? No, there hadn't been.
Looks like the house hasn't been touched at all.
They just bought it, didn't they?
They just bought it, and they're just doing some clean out now.
They just bought.
Oh, so they sold it then?
Right.
Yeah.
It's been sold, just purchased recently, and they've been doing a little cleanup around it, so.
Ralph has a lot of rental properties.
Good news.
Yeah, that's good news. And I got another one of these next week, so.
Well, we hope. I'm not hope. I've seen some rentals as well.
If I really have a conflict, but I know Ralph well, so I'm going to abstain. So it passes four zero one. Forty-three's a resolution authorizing a third amendment to the development agreement, a first amendment to the minimum assessment agreement, and substitute promissory note with the Warrior Hotel. I'll move that.
Second.
This is not new money, Dolly. It's a rewrite of the existing agreement. Headline was a little bit deceptive online today. Passes four zero one. Mr. Moore abstains. Forty-four is a waiving specific requirements in the SUDAS specification manual for residential development and the residence at Elk Creek subdivision. Staff will request a motion to defer the item till June 14th, 2021. I'll move that.
Second.
Call this one. Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Wouldn't that more reflective, say, weigh the specific requirements of the modified SUDAS? Because I'm not sure the developer's opposed to SUDAS, but he certainly is opposed to what you guys have modified. Isn't that? I mean, you send us all this stuff. I've asked for you guys to come on the council and tell us what SUDAS actually means, because.
I, I, I didn't write the RCA, so I can't say, but I, I, yeah, probably would say the requirements in the Sioux City supplement of the SUDAS.
Right, because I think they, they, they're fine with SUDAS, right?
Well, SUDAS doesn't have a typical cross-section. Basically, it goes through the whole ESAL calculations and, uh, all the, uh, geotechnical testing that would be required and all that. Uh, like many communities, we adopted a typical section. We had a typical section. We've always had a typical cross-section, uh, that was considered the minimum cross-section. And, uh, uh, back in November 19, we upgraded that, improved the length of our roads, the, uh, reduced the maintenance on our roads, and, um, this is the first development that went to go ahead and develop.
But we've done, my problem is, Dave, we've done all kinds of streets in this community. We've done all kinds of streets that we've redone 100%, complete streets. We didn't, we didn't require it on our own streets.
You keep saying that, but what project are you referring to?
Did you do it on Pier Street?
Yes.
You put 14 inches underneath there?
We didn't, it doesn't ask for 14 inches.
What'd you put under there?
Six, either four or six. I can't remember off the top of my head. I can go back and look, but, uh, it was either four or six with subdrains. We did not, it doesn't require 12 or 14 inches of, of sub, sub base. It requires them to recompact the top 18 inches. Either six inches or four inches, four inches with fabric or six inches without fabric with sub, and, and laterals or longitudinal.
They put fabric under that on Pier Street?
I'd have to go look.
Either that or six.
They did six inches or they did four.
I'd like to know. I'd like.
Well, I don't know off the top of my head.
Because I don't think you've done that on every street.
Every project since, that's been designed since November of 2019 has had.
Gordon stood here a few weeks ago and said not everyone had. That's why I'm asking.
Not everything that's been constructed, because some were designed prior to the change. We didn't go back and redesign them after they were done. And the only other one would be West Seventeenth, didn't have longitudinal subdrains because it had no outlet. So there was no point in running a drain that was not gonna outlet anywhere.
I'd like to know.
Well, that's, that's it.
Oh, okay. I don't know why Gordon said that then. Okay. All right.
Just a quick clarification. That was deferred one week to June 14th, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I'm gonna move, we defer forty-five till next week, too.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Citizen concern.
That would be your time. Nowhere is.
Miranda Queso, 652. I'm here today to ask that a motion be made to completely redo the RFP process. I found about thirty violations in the way it was done for animal control alone. My concerns, that's how all the bidding's done. I can't imagine how many ideas have died in that hallway, along with thousands of taxpayer dollars because the process was so flawed. This isn't my opinion, anything that I say. This is a hundred percent the law. The way it was done is corrupt at best, legal at worst. So the main issues I had with the RFP problem were that the RFP team was too small and had bias. I identified bias with Young, Riley, and Groves as it pertained to Amanda Hazy, or Johnson. That RFP team is supposed to consist of eight to ten people. It consisted of four. Of those eight to ten, they're supposed to be split into two groups, where my number two issue comes into play. Performance, cost, and technical ability are the three standard categories you would review in an RFP process. Performance and cost were missing. That's two-thirds. Technical ability was evaluated, but point number three, and this is according to acquisitions.gov, you guys didn't even do that part right, because you are not allowed to award favorably or unfavorably to somebody who's never done that specific job before. Well, on this particular RFP scorecard, it was worth seventy-five points. Number four, the matrix for technical ability was not mathematically correct. It was not exhaustive. The questions were not mutually exclusive. The word experience was used in three of the seven categories. It did not maintain a professional tone. In fact, it went from second to third person, using words like "you," but then using words like "firm." So the scores wouldn't know, are they evaluating the personal resume, or are they evaluating firm? And I know that they didn't know, because if you look into the final columns, no four, none of the cards of the four were the same. Some people had Henne Inc., some people had Animal Control Services LLC, some people had Cindy, some people had Amanda. What were they judging? Also on the matrix, there was not a clear operating narrative, which assigns certain values to the metrics so that they make sense. We talked about this before. You guys have all been sent several copies from purchasing organizations that have to do with what those should look like. Finally, the questions weren't relevant. Fifteen points were given for proposal, which was supposed to be what was reviewed. Thirty points were given for operating machinery. There is no machinery operated at animal control, yet it took home twice as many points as the proposal itself. Number five, and this is a really big ethical violation, is when you're doing this, you are supposed to review the proposal against a scorecard, not each other. You never see both people on the same scorecard. That is unheard of. And you know that that was the case, because by the time you get to the second or third question, the incumbent had so many points that nothing else would have mattered. It was mathematically impossible, given the matrix that was given to Officer Groves and the review team, for anybody else to win. This took a lot of time and money and effort, and it was completely unfair. My sixth point is that when a...
You're gonna have to wrap it up, because I've given you way more than three minutes, so.
When an RFP team comes to council, they are only allowed to speak on the factors on the scorecard. The scorecard was flawed, so that was difficult. Groves spoke about his relationship with Rarrett, not relevant, concerns with Amanda, which ended up being erroneous. We could talk about that on the fourteenth. And finally, a nonprofit, a nonprofit wasn't even any part of the proposal, so it should have never been evaluated or talked to you guys about. In fact, she's been there thirty years. This nonprofit didn't exist till 2015.
Hey, you need to wrap it up.
Okay. I will see you guys on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wanna say something?
My name is Alexandra Dreason, and my address, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-one oh four South Lakeport Street. So I am speaking somewhat to the same as what she was about animal control. I just, I've had a few interactions with them in the past six to eight months, and the way that they're, the people that work there, don't get me wrong, they're all, most of them are great. They're really friendly and helpful and whatnot. I've been down there like every week for six months, but they're...
That's a lot of pets to adopt.
I don't have all those pets, though. I've been looking for a cat for a long time. But they, my boyfriend ended up adopting a cat from there, and they, they're processing on spaying animals. They spay them when they're eight weeks old. You're just supposed to wait till they're like six months old at least. And for this reason that she come home with ear mites, ringworm, and all this, I had to take and pay for myself. And we, she had to get surgery again because her stomach, her, she had like a hernia, because they didn't do it right. And I also had, my other cat, she ran off on me, and she ended up being down there. She was microchipped. They didn't even check her for a microchip. And they say that they had her for almost seven days, and there's no way. She was gone for four. And I was just lucky I found her, because she was deemed aggressive. Well, she'll run up to anybody and let them pet her, so I don't know, you know, maybe throwing her in a cage probably made her a little upset, but they probably, she probably, I wouldn't have found her if I wouldn't have, you know, yeah. So I just don't appreciate some of how it works down there, and I think that Amanda would, or anybody, for that matter, would probably be able to maybe help make some of that better, because I know that there's other people I've spoke to that have had the same issues as far as their pets being there and them not knowing. And they were put up for adoption inside the seven days that they claimed to give them. And, yeah.
You just have some concerns.
Yeah.
I did have one question, just as a follow-up. Regarding the kitten, you said, right, that had the mites and stuff like that, did you let them know when you brought it in and said, hey, I'm having all these problems?
No, I took it to my own vet. And like, my vet, my vet suggested to call them and see if they would pay for the extra surgery. I didn't.
And that's what I was asking about.
Yeah, no, I didn't do that. I probably could, but I assumed that they wouldn't want to do that, so.
How long ago was that?
This was, oh, it would have been in February, I believe.
I just wanted that clarification, because, yeah, whenever something is done wrong, I always wanna make sure to go back to the person and say, could you make it right, or why is this the way it is? Just clarification. That was all.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And Dave, before you go, or before you speak, can I say a few things? Sorry, man. I just wanted to ask about the RFP process and what, if there is, because I, I think that there are points being made. Obviously, I think Miranda's done a lot of research and sent a lot of us reading material and makes some suggestions of how we can make the, the process more equitable, or any of those things. And, and I missed that meeting, but I'm told that the mayor, and I, I haven't heard the explanation, but the mayor voted against this, because he felt it could have been more equitable as well. So I don't know if he has ideas for improving the RFP process. Obviously, if I would have had suggestions for the RFP process or had done that research, I would have made it prior to them going through the entire process, but here we are. And so I think that... No, and, and I understand your position. I didn't know the mayor had questions about it. And so I'm saying if I, knowing what the RFP process was, had questions, I would have went and had staff change it before then, is all I was saying. But I don't know if we can direct city staff to look at that program, or if the League of Cities, because my understanding, I spoke with a member of our legal team, that this process is used in a lot of different capacities, at a lot of different cities. And so I just wanna make sure that we're using processes that are up to date or as equitable as possible. And if someone as seasoned in this as the mayor has some questions and wants to make sure it's equitable, I wanna make sure that his concerns are addressed, as well as taken into account Miranda's, Miranda's point as well.
Anyone else be heard?
So I don't know, I, okay.
Well, I, I voiced my opinions, and we're moving forward, so that's...
But I'm saying for future contracts, I think that we'll wanna make the changes that you are proposing.
Your attorney tell us how they, she can do it differently, I guess.
Okay. Does that make sense, that we'll have to work with the city attorney on future RFP process to see how they can be updated or improved, is what the mayor is saying?
Who's everyone?
I don't think everyone believes us in.
I don't think everyone agrees with that.
Okay.
Dave Bernstein, twos are at Court Street, Sioux City, State Steel. I just wanna voice my opinion. I did discuss with Mr. Carney the other day and emailed Mr. Padmore as well, but the closing of Fourth Street for three weeks for the development, I think you guys have a development agreement with the apartments that are being constructed. And just to encourage you all to aggressively deal with that in the future, especially when you're fun, helping to fund the project, to push for highly expedited scenarios instead of a three-week closure. I, I'm sure many of you have been down in that area, Julie, for sure, when a train blocks the downtown, which is roughly two to three hours a day. Maybe I'm exaggerating slightly, but not much.
Perhaps not.
And everyone rushes immediately for Fourth and Fifth Street, and now that Fourth Street is closed during the day, it's a total cluster for anyone trying to do business down in that area. And to have that, realizing that a development like that needs a closure for a period of time, but to me, three weeks seems highly excessive and not expedited, and especially in a scenario where you guys are writing, I'm sure, a pretty generous check from my recollection for more apartments, compelling them in a development agreement to do that in a very quick manner would be highly appreciated by the businesses down there, specifically us, who, we try to run a lot of vehicles over the Viaduct, the Floyd, to get over the trains, and we can't now, so then you gotta go down to Wesley Way. And it's an adjustment, of course, but it just is super disruptive and seems unnecessary.
I think we said if we're gonna do these, council needed to know about it, but here we are again. Am I wrong? I thought we, we were gonna have these extended street closures. We were supposed to know about it, but...
Did it come, of course? I wasn't sure if it did or not.
No, it didn't come to us, absolutely.
Just published notice.
It's not the end of the world. There is a detour, but I, I think everyone, anyone looking at traffic down there would realize that Fourth Street or Fifth Street on there, I mean, everyone goes to all of those. It is an utter mess, and we don't have any intelligence signals down in that area, at least not right now. The DOT had noted that in a prior report relating to the Gordon Drive Viaduct. And the lack of intelligence signals and everything else keyed in with the rail and all that, just make it an utter mess down there, multiple hours per day. And ultimately, maybe we'll have quiet zones as well, which will solve another thing, maybe in like two or three more years. And, you know, it's, it's really not a great place to do business downtown. And when you add this to it, it's even worse, and it's not necessarily a great place to live as well, and especially when this kind of stuff happens. So it's food for thought, because it's annoying, so.
Dave, why did we give them three weeks?
Well, and I can speak, because I asked Gordon that same question, and Gordon and I had a lot of conversations about that back and forth. I was told they actually asked for four weeks. Is that right?
For what they?
And, and Gordon said, no, I know, and I'm saying that staff was like, look, that's unacceptable. It would be four, probably four or five days. But the, the trouble or the worry was, if weather came up, they would then have to go through the entire process again.
My guess is...
So they didn't anticipate taking three weeks.
My guess is in a place like Chicago or something like that, give them three days and let them work around the clock at their expense. And, you know, we just don't do that. We never put the pressure on. And I'm just suggesting, when you write a check for that development, which you probably didn't need to do, by the way, but when you do that, that you compel them to actually do it in a timely manner. So, as a...
And I think we did.
They might have asked for seven weeks, but that doesn't mean they need it.
No, they did request four weeks, and we told them no. They came back and said three, and they told us that they had padded it, so in case of impending weather.
They brought a sewer and water line in.
To connect, right?
Right?
Yes, that is correct.
Three weeks.
One week, prepare, pave back, because they got the whole street open, curb to curb.
And so they were saying that they don't anticipate it will take three weeks at all. They were just saying they wanted to allow that time in case weather came up, so they didn't have to go through the process to re-request for the closure. And then we were also thinking the cure time of the concrete. Is that right?
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
That is correct.
Did they have all that and everything?
Yes.
Gonna be there and watch them, because it happens all over town that they don't do that. They tell you they're gonna, but they don't. You gonna be there and make sure?
Yes.
But let me know when they're pouring. I'd like to be there to make sure, too.
You got it.
Staff doesn't catch that very often.
I could tell you from firsthand experience, like with Court Street, which we were highly impacted for two, you know, for the two blocks in front of our operation. They figured out a way to do it in halves and, you know, mildly creatively and minimize disruption. And, and it just seems to me that, you know, in the future, exploration with maybe an engineer on behalf of the city, if it's not, you know, fully within your department, to just say, like, what should this really take if we expedite it and work around the clock? Because I'm sure they're not, you know, I'm sure they're getting in.
I was gonna say, I've talked about doing round-the-clock road projects, and there's just not the staff or not the ability for us to...
Those guys have big developer fees and that thing, and it's a, it's a fat deal, and it's, it's one of those deals where...
Who's doing the work?
There should have been money.
Mark Albinicious Incorporated?
You discussed at the public works team meeting that you guys had. Was that when it was discussed?
On Fourth Street? No, that was never discussed.
No.
I, I got the notice they were closing, I'm sure.
And then I followed up. As soon as I heard a property owner was frustrated, was frustrated that didn't receive notice because the city just published it in the paper, but then I followed up and city staff had given pretty explicit instructions to the contractor to go talk to the neighboring property because it was going to disrupt their business.
That is correct. And we'd already received complaints from one of those businesses about the development, not necessarily the contractor, because he, he wasn't involved at that moment.
Yeah.
We specifically told him for that reason.
But I think to Dave's point, then, too, is just continuing to look for creative solutions. Anytime a business is gonna be disrupted, to really hold their feet to the fire, especially if we're investing in the project, which I think is what Dave's saying. So, thank you.
Anyone else be heard?
Thanks, Dave.
Ernie Colt, forty-five, twenty-six, Perry Way. I got a couple of things. First of all, at my house, they did some street reconstruction down there on...
Forget which road you live on, Ernie. I can't...
Perry Way?
Down the...
Thirty-eighth Street?
Country Club. Then they did the little loop around Perry Way, and I was the last one on Perry Way. And so my yard was kinda being used as a staging area. And I did, it didn't bother me. They come halfway up into my yard, and I got pictures of all that. But when they left, they were supposed to put, like, new sod down. And they did fairly good in the yard part, but in the parking area, they planted a bunch of dead sod, and it never did really grow right. I've spent a couple hundred dollars trying to put grass seed in there, and I, I can't even get grass seed to grow on the dirt that they put in there. So I've got some dead sod out in the parking area. And then around the corner on my driveway, the driveway is sinking. The driveway, the end of my driveway has sunk about two inches where it meets the street. It's almost like they didn't put the epoxy-coated dowels in there to keep it from sinking, and it's right on the edge of the gutter. So a lot of that crap runs down the gutter and into my driveway, and then I got a puddle of stuff in my driveway that won't ever get out of there. I don't know whether grind the street down or have that fixed. I mean, it's a definite construction error there by not putting those dowels in there. I called down to the city today and was disconnected somehow, so I don't know who to talk to about getting that addressed.
Dave, or Bob, or Gordon?
Gordon, or...
Anyone mind following up with Ernie, just to go see the project? Okay.
Can talk to the outside, Ernie.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then I also just wanted to make a comment. And then I also just wanted to make a comment, and kind of publicly thank Councilman Moore for doing his damnedest to be frugal and a good steward of taxpayer dollars when it comes to this LEC project. You know, we're fifteen million dollars over budget on that deal, and trying to shove it through and push it down everybody's throats, and it's just, it doesn't make sense. It needs, you know, just like every other project, it's over the engineer's estimated cost, it just needs to go back for rebid, and that's all I got to say. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who would agree with that? Say it's not going to get cheaper, but it is going to get cheaper. It's ridiculous to spend that kind of money, but I suppose they're up against the bond date, but we're all going to pay for that extra, and it's, you know, I'm going to let it go.
Let it go today. Anyone else to be heard?
Hold it.
I just have a question, if I can, for the chair.
You got to come to the microphone.
You just got to come up here to speak.
You asked me who thought that it was unfair, and I know that-
No, I didn't ask who, you said everyone. So I just said, who is everyone?
Do you think it's been fair? Because one of the things I did while going into this is, I kind of researched how, kind of tried to get in some people's headspace on maybe what their relationships were with certain people. I learned-
Listen, make it quick, we've already been through this.
I know that when you hire, you are really good about interviewing everybody. I know you're hiring for two jobs now, you have applications out for servers and a kitchen manager. Those are far more thorough than what went out for this two million dollar project. So when you spend four twenty-five an hour of your own money on a entry-level server, why are you more careful than when you spend two million dollars of taxpayers' money? Because that's not fair.
Listen, she's not going to answer the question, I'll answer for it. There's been litigation threatened in this matter, and we're not going to answer those type of questions until we have a-
Because you guys threaten to-
Because we have a subpoena, until we have a subpoena, that's the rules. We don't answer those type of questions in this format. That's the way it works, because of the threat of a legal challenge this, okay?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Greck.
I just wanted to mention, along with Mr. Moore, I know, because they acknowledged him, I was at the Sioux City Municipal Band Event last night. It really was very, very nice, something that the citizens should really take advantage of. It was a beautiful evening, little warm, but windy, and they did a really, really nice job, so I thought I'd throw that on the table, and then I-
Why was Mr. Moore not playing in the band? Is that why?
No, he was in the front row singing and directing and extending signals.
Reason enough for me not to go, but go ahead with your-
No, I was way up on top of them.
I'll find a business to give you a ride.
I did notice, and Bob, maybe, I don't know, you probably don't, but next time you meet with Rex, apparently, they've got new speed limit signs out, which I think is really a good thing.
I've seen some.
There's a digital speed limit sign in the, probably the eighteen hundred block, seventeen hundred block of Floyd Boulevard for southbound traffic. And that's really a good spot, because there are two lanes, and when you get to the top of the hill, you got to get over to the left lane, or you're going to hit something or-
It emerges.
Yeah, it's really an issue, but I'm happy to see they got the speed limit signs up there, so I wanted to thank the police department, and I don't know where else they put them, but I do think they're effective, I do think they help with safety on the roads, so they've talked about it a long time, and they're starting to get them up there, so that's great. I really appreciate, and that's, I had an issue about a trip hazard, but I already spoke to Matt Salvatore about it, and he's working on it. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Shaner.
Hi, I would like to say what a great weekend it was in Sioux City. We had our first big festival, the Sux Pride Festival was in town. I think it went very smoothly, I think everybody had a great time, I think it was great for businesses and for people to gather and to get along with one another, so I say congratulations to the planners of the event.
Yeah, I would just bring a couple things light. I would echo Councilwoman Shaner's remarks. I was, I went down to the convention center for a little while to check it out and say hi, and see some folks, and everyone was having a great time, it seemed like. Convention Center staff did a great job, I didn't hear of any complaints or any concerns, so well done to them and their team for being able to do that. I was really bummed, Pete, that I wasn't able to make the band on Sunday, so I'm glad it was a good time.
It was.
I look forward to the future events, and that's something that's free, provided by the council, the council supports that.
And they acknowledged the council in appreciation of all they do. But I don't know, Dan, what is the schedule? Do they do it every week, or is it every other week?
Every Sunday evening at seven thirty.
Every Sunday evening?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful evening.
It is really nice.
And Pete's right, host Dave Madsen always thanks the city and the city council, Parks and Rec.
And Dave does a great job, too.
He does. Bet he does. Yep, he does.
No, I was just going to mention that, and definitely encourage everyone to be able to go to that. I was also going to say, along, similar vein as Julie was, just a lot going on, there was a lot to be excited about. I went down to Food Truck Fridays, the inaugural one of those this season, and it was absolutely packed, a little warm, but along those same lines with that one, and then there was Yummy Blocks down on West Seventh that opened up, so I was able to kind of drive that stretch. And I would just really commend our staff for the landscaping. I pray that we keep that up, that we keep it watered, that we keep those things living, because it really does look beautiful on West Seventh and around that Pearl Street Park. Those are two great, great additions. I would love to bring that same landscaping from West Seventh onto Fourth Street, and look for different ways that we can, we can improve those areas. I know the plants were going in the potters. The last thing that I would just recognize was the team that went out on Glenn Avenue when the heat just got a little bit much for the pavement and it burst, the staff that had to go out and quick patch that, that was probably not a fun job to do, and over a hundred degree, well, probably felt like over a hundred degree weather, so I appreciate their quick response to that problem as well.
Where at on Glenn Avenue, Alex?
Right, well, a block off South St. Aubin. Yeah, just like less than a block off South St. Aubin, so. No, other than that, just a lot going on in our community, that's for sure, that's all I have, Mayor.
The PSAs have started, or will be starting, on the fireworks. I want, and I hope, the community will pull together and discharge fireworks on the two days that is legal in our community, July third and July fourth. I know I'm walking on thin ice-
Spring's eternal for you, that's what I like about you.
I know I'm walking on thin ice with the council, but I want the PSAs to work, I want to try to educate the public as much as we can to honor and abide by the July third and July fourth dates. And we've already had some, I think the police department has already had some complaints.
I got two this morning.
Lodged with, yeah, lodged with them, and really, I don't want it to divide the community, I want it to pull us together, and together we can really make a difference. And I'm hoping on July, when's our meeting in July? July fifth?
I can hardly wait.
No, that's probably July twelfth is the first.
July twelfth?
The fifth is the holiday.
I'll report back. I don't think I need to report back, you'll probably know, but-
It's going to be a success.
I want it to be a success, and we worked hard on the PSAs, and I don't know what else we can do. And it's not, it's a plus, it really is, it's a positive to let everyone know when the two dates are, because if you move into our community, and I can go buy fireworks tomorrow, or whenever they start the fireworks sale, Mayor, I'm going to think it's going to be okay. Seriously, I think it's going to be okay to discharge them. The other thing our city has to offer every year, except probably for last year, are the professional display of fireworks that we have. Sioux City Explorers helped me out, we even have them at the Rivercade Parade. Saturday in the park. Bless you. Is my three minutes up?
I was about to cut you off.
Sorry. No, but we have-
Saturday in the park?
Saturday in the park, and they're professional displays, they're safe. And these PSAs, everything we've done for the fireworks, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, is for the safety of all, it really is. Not only those that have health issues, but just keeping people safe, kids safe, adults safe, safety's number one. So I am really, you're right, I am optimistic that we can pull together on this, July third and July fourth, please, please, please. And Julie, I'd ask you to help me to remind people, Alex and Pete and the mayor.
You're on your own on this one, pal.
Abide by that calendar.
Thanks for your work.
And then finally, just one of my favorites, and I'm going to have to miss it, is the Leeds Parade, is Friday, June eleventh, and it's-
No, you're missing a parade.
I know, and I had terrible withdrawals last year when no parades were held, and I'm looking forward to them, and they are fun, the community turns out for them. The Morningside Days Parade was just spectacular. Of course, we ran out of candy, so make sure for the Leeds Parade you have several boxes of candy per-
They're saying one.
Maybe Channel Four throw in some bings.
Well, I think they do that in the parade, and I think you'll-
Stop by our vehicle.
I was going to say, I'm going to go find you guys, then.
But I've said this before, and it's really, we do have a lot of activity going on in the city, but it's really exciting, especially the Morningside Days Parade was really exciting because everybody turns out for that, and it's positive, it's upbeat, it's a lot of just positive energy, and it was, it was great fun. And I walked the whole thing, Julie.
You ran part of it.
I ran, well, that's because the mayor sped up, and said, now's my chance. Thank you for slowing the mayor down.
I was trying.
Yeah, I almost got you on that wheelchair, you pull in front of me Friday night, and you might-